Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune in to our other content as well.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome you to the zoning Board of Adjustments meeting for August 20th, 2024. I can try. I don't project as well. Okay. I am Esther Olser-Murphy. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustments. To my right is Laura Davies. She's our clerk. To my left is Kevin Baum. He's a full member. And Mark Lemus is an alternate on my far, far left. So as you can all see, we have four members. Before we get started, I want to make sure you're okay with us going forward with four members.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
The applicant says yes, so it's on the record. So, to get started, we have one item of new business tonight. Tonight's new business is an application from Robert V. and Karen C. Pryor and Kenneth Brown for an appeal of an administrative decision made by the Town Building Inspector/Code Enforcement Officer on March 5th, 2024, that resulted in the recent lot merger... Hold on, let me try that again. That as a result of a recent lot merger, the entirety of Riverwoods Exeter will now be located on one site and therefore, the presence of one onsite healthcare center providing skilled nursing will satisfy the requirement of Article 6, Section 6.1 of the Zoning Ordinance Tax Map Parcel Number 97-23, ZBA Case 24-7. So before we get started on this, I just want to discuss with the board to make sure...
Excuse me, Madam Chair. You need to appoint your alternate as a member for this application.
Oh, sorry. Mark will be voting tonight as our alternate, since there's only four of us. So, now that Mark knows he can participate...
I've been appointed.
I want to discuss the topic of jurisdiction on hearing this case based on the town's 30-day appeal timeline. When we received this appeal on July 29th and it was granted on March 5th.
Yeah, I think, if I may...
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, I... You know, I hate to see all these people come out tonight because I don't think we have jurisdiction to hear this. I mean, we've been consistent in the past and my understanding of the statute is that the timeline is determined... It's a reasonable time or as set forth in the rules for the ZBA. And our rules say administrative decisions have to be filed within 30 days of the decision. I don't know of any ability to stray from that and we have not in the past. We've had other cases that have been more than 30 days. They've been 31 days and we have determined we don't have jurisdiction. I don't see anything different here. I understand that it was a letter determination without public notice, but that's no different than a building permit or other decisions that would generate an administrative decision. I also, even if you... Even though that's not the case, and Laura, I'm happy to discuss this. I mean, even if that's not the case, there's clear that there was actual notice well over 30 days because this was discussed... The merger was discussed in March.
This isn't about the merger. This is about the administrative decision to let the merger... This is about the administrative decision to let the merger bypass a zoning process. This is not just the lot merger. This is an administrative decision saying the lot merger's enough to not go before the zoning board. When the zoning board had already ruled through a very lengthy and public process to deny this application and now one thing has changed and this is about the decision saying that that one thing is enough to negate the judicial decision of this zoning board.
Well, I don't think we're still deliberating on jurisdiction.
I want to ask for Laura Davies to recuse herself from this discussion based upon comments that were made at the June 27th Planning Board hearing. And I just want to go on the record as asking for that right now.
There's been a request for your recusal. It's... I don't know what comments were made.
Well, I was public at the Planning Board meeting about the fact that I was shocked that a project of this size magnitude that influences and impacts so many people could happen. And I didn't even know about the administrative decision at that point. I just was confused and surprised at the fact that something could get past zoning and to the planning board without a zoning process when it's a project of this size. And I was frankly confused. And I had discussed my confusion with Doug right around the time this decision was issued and he never once mentioned that there was an administrative decision issued. He told me about the lot merger and that the lot merger could be appealed, but he never said anything about an administrative decision. And I just can't understand how a decision of this magnitude that went through an entire public process over a course of months could be waived away with the stroke of a pen and no public notice and the butters weren't notified. How are they supposed to appeal if there's no notification?
So I think, yeah...
Can I just... I have the minutes right here. And Laura Davies indicated that she did not feel that this project was in keeping with the special exception approval. She opined that this was bypassing zoning with the lot merger. If this matter gets to a point where there's going to be any vote, I really need to ask that she recuse herself. She's not capable of making an impartial decision on this.
We should probably address that now.
Can you please speak to the microphone so...
The microphone doesn't amplify, unfortunately. That's just to get recordings on television.
Can you repeat what she said?
She has requested that Laura Davies recuse herself.
I'm not interested in that. I feel like I have a position on this through a public process and I'm entitled to my position. You know, we spent a lot of time making the original decision and I was offended that it was turned away without any kind of public process. And if I had known that there was administrative decision, I would have maybe even... I don't know what I would have done, but I certainly would have made it known that I was not happy about that. You know, you want people to volunteer and do this work and then the decision goes away somehow? It's just not... To me, it's not right. And I believe that the notification part of this is very, very questionable if not, you know, not throwing this completely out.
I... Sorry, Laura. I think we should make a... You know, it's your decision whether you recuse yourself or not. We can take a vote. But I think we should formally address that before further discussion. That's my thought.
That's fine. So, my position is based on my comments and my position now is based on the public record of what has happened. And yes, I feel strongly, but I don't feel that that disqualifies me because I've experienced the Riverwoods approval process for many years and it has, you know, left an impression. So...
Yeah, I mean, I think the question is whether, you know, you can be objective about the decision tonight.
I think we were objective about the decision that we made before. I'm concerned about this process. Very, very concerned about this process.
So are you saying that you don't know if you can be?
No. I'm saying that I believe in... One of the RSA's, it talks about recusal and... It talks about knowledge of a situation is not adequate grounds for recusal. And that's what I feel is my situation. That I have knowledge of this situation over a long-term period of time and that I have no direct pecuniary or otherwise impact from this. I just have an opinion and it's formed over years.
Yeah, I mean, I think the question is whether you, you know, it's... You can be objective and whether you've potentially prejudged.
I prejudged that this shouldn't be bounced out based on a technicality because there was no notification of the decision. That's what I prejudged.
I guess the problem is legally there was... They didn't have to notify.
Well, I think you should... So you're not... You're... Laura, you're... You do not believe you need to recuse yourself?
I do not.
And you are not recusing yourself?
I'm not doing that, no.
Okay.
Madam Chair, did you want to discuss this in a council session?
Does the gentleman identify himself who keeps...
Joe Driscoll, the town's council.
Does the board feel we should go into a non-meeting?
I think if we need clarification on the process for recusal, I think it'd be a good idea.
I think it might be a...
I agree.
Need a motion for that?
I guess I would move to go into non-public session for discussions.
Non-public session or non-meeting?
Well, I guess it'd be non-meeting for discussion with council.
A second?
Everybody in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so we're going to now go into a non-meeting to discuss this issue with council before moving forward. So we will be back.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune in to our other content as well.
Yes.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast.
Okay, we're back in session. We just discussed recusals with our attorney. So now we have that all situated. Wood.
So I've decided not to recuse myself. I feel that I can be fair and I have no direct interest.
Okay. So we are now going to go continue our discussion on jurisdiction? And how we feel in terms of the 30-day town policy.
So again, I'll just briefly, I mean, my, you know, my position is there is no jurisdiction. It, it's, once the decision is made, there's 30 days to appeal it. Whether there's any required notice or not, I'm, I'm not aware, you know, of any way to waive from that, and we have not in the past. And the other thing I would say is the merger in question, again, even if there, if it was a question of notice, you know, the applicants had actual notice of the merger, at least as of the March meeting. So it's still beyond.
The March meeting?
Well, as we, March, March 19th was when we first heard the, the Riverwoods application. And it's, you know, in the meeting, and it's all now, all the parcels now merged via voluntary lot merger.
No, you're right about the, the merger.
So, so I think that would be, you know, again, I, I, I get it, because it, I've had this come up.
Well, the lot merger was noticed, but the administrative decision granting no need for variance was not noticed.
Yeah, I get that.
And that's a big difference.
Yeah, but I guess, but once the application came in, again, I don't know that you need to go there, but once the application came in for the March meeting, it's still more than 30 days beyond.
The March meeting.
The March meeting. I mean, it was a July 29th application.
I didn't know about the merger, and I don't think most people, I mean, not the merger, the, the administrative decision, for months. I, I don't know who did know, but it was, the lot merger was somewhat a public thing, but the, the administrative decision was not.
I guess maybe I'm not understanding then, because I, my understanding is the lot merger allowed, you know, the, the project to go forward, and that came forward.
The lot merger was.
With the, the variances for height and for, and for the, you know, the buffer.
Well, my take on this is that the lot merger was a public thing, and it was a decision signed off by the Chair of the Planning Board, and it was referenced in the application in March. But the administrative decision that that lot merger was enough for the project not to require a special exception or any variance relief for this change was made by Doug. It was made by the administrative officer, and that is a separate thing that was not public.
Yeah, I guess I, I guess I thought that was known when they came forward. Again, I, I don't think we need to get to that, but I think, I thought that was known when they came forward in March, because they were, why would they be coming forward for the project?
That's what I kept asking. Why are they coming forward for this project? How can that be? And, and I guess I just felt that it was not just not noticed, it was almost concealed. So I don't know how a decision, and, you know, a lot of the, the examples and the case law refer to decisions, administrative decisions on the power of whether or not to issue a building permit. This is a decision that is overturning an already made decision by this board.
But I guess, how I see it is, we made a decision based, when looking at it, when it was separate lots. Once the lots were merged, now it's a completely different application essentially.
Exactly, and it should have been reviewed as a, as a completely separate application.
It was, they came back and applied for the needed variances. They didn't need the variance any longer for the one unit for healthcare, because it was one parcel. It does, I agree, it seems it was a big, it's a big project. I agree with that, but the way the rules are written, they, they didn't have to have notification. There was a meeting where they came asking for relief. We heard it. We granted what we felt we could. I don't think we granted anything from that one either.
We didn't, we didn't grant anything.
We didn't grant them anything, even with the new one.
The choices before us at that point were a height variance and a buffer relief variance. The choice was not ever, does this project meet the special exception criteria?
Because it didn't need, they didn't have any special criteria it needed to meet, did it?
Yeah, that was.
When they built the office building in 2010, they came before us and presented their application to make in addition to their campus as part of the, and the, the rationale was that this is part of a campus and that the special exception should extend to that. But it was a decision made by the board about that, not just automatic. And this is orders of magnitude, let's see, 40 times as big. So why wouldn't this need to be, um.
I guess, again.
Brought before the board for consideration of how this fits into the special exception criteria. It's an enormous project, and we had heard about it and made a decision that was not just predicated on the fact that there were multiple lots. How does that all go away?
Because that was the variance. I mean, the variance was, the, the variance at issue, which was denied, was whether they could have a healthcare facility with, I want to get the right words. But yeah, without having, you know, without having a healthcare facility on the property. And when they merged, that went away. But I, you know, again, I don't think that's even the substance we need to get to. I think the question is, I just, you know, I don't know how we get past the 30 days.
We're talking, we need to start focusing back on the jurisdiction, 30 days. That's what we need to look at first.
If the decision takes away a, a legal decision by the zoning board, that is not, why wouldn't it have to follow at least the same process? It's being done by one individual. Why wouldn't it have to follow at least the same process if it's going to be made, an enormous decision of that import?
That's, but that's, that's the job of the code enforcement officer. I mean, it's to interpret the, interpret the code in the first instance.
I did not interpret that.
Interpret.
From our attorney.
Well.
I did not determine that. It's in the letter. I made that decision based on a letter from Dave Sharplez and Mitchell Brooks. I did not make that on my own. I'm sorry if I spoke out of line, but I'm not going to be lied.
Well, that's my misunderstanding then. Whoever made the decision, I mean, the point, again, I think we're getting off point.
These are things we would discuss if we have jurisdiction to even hear this.
The question is, how do you, I just don't see how you get past, the statute says the timing of administration is based on the rules of procedure of the zoning board. Our rules of procedure say it has to be filed within 30 days of the decision or requirement in question. It may not be fair, and I've seen this happen, and I've had people be stuck by this, that, you know, and a building permit is usually where it happens, because there is no public notice for a building permit, and that can be very impactful to people who have a, you know, project going up next door. I don't think it makes any, any difference. I'm not aware of any exclusion, and my thinking is even if there were, there was, there was, there was notice, there was actual notice, there was constructive notice that this was going forward. It was clear to me when they came in for the variance, for the height and the buffer, that they weren't coming for the use variance anymore.
Well, I got that, but I couldn't understand why. And I think that other people couldn't understand why. I think the abutters deserve to know why. And, yeah, everybody got the, the part that, that it was going forward, but the why, how it was enabled to go forward was the part that was missing.
I, yeah.
You know, again, I, I was open with these questions, and it was not, there was never any discussion of an administrative decision.
I guess I understand all those, your concerns there, but before we can get to those concerns, we do need to determine if we have jurisdiction to hear this, because once we determine that, then we can figure out if we can figure that out, or if it's beyond our ability to do so.
I don't think you can separate the, the question of whether or not notice was required from the, the scope of the decision and the fact that the board had already made a decision. So, but if, you know, that's my opinion.
Can I ask a question from our attorney? So, to your knowledge, is there any requirement that there has to be a notification to abutters when an administrative decision is made?
No, there's no requirement, any requirements for planning decisions, zoning decisions, those are all statutorily provided for. This, again, as Kevin cited, the building permit example, you know, administrative decisions are made throughout municipalities. That's what your officers do, and this is where those appeals would go.
And is there any discussion of the scope of, appropriate scope of administrative decisions?
I'm not.
In the law? Like, what, what is the purview of an administrative decision? What's an appropriate?
Well, here, you have an interpretation of the zoning ordinance that occurred with this application. It occurs with basically everyone that comes in front of you. There's a staff person receiving the application. If there's a series of variances, likely the staff person has been involved in a discussion with the developer or the applicant as to what would be necessary. So these happen regularly. This, this is just a determination of an applicable use for this application.
I guess I just find it hard to understand what the point of a board is if the determination can be made by a single individual without public process, but that's just me.
So to you, to whether, I mean, we're still discussing jurisdiction.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to get through the jurisdiction and get that emotion either way and agreed upon before we step into anything else. Does anybody else have any input?
You know, again, I, I know it's not going to be popular, and I, I understand the unfairness of it, but that's, that's the way the statute works. And, you know, we have rejected, as a board, we have rejected people on the 31st day, and this, you know, this is several months. So I, I just, I don't, I, I understand the magnitude here, but statutorily and under our rules, I'm not seeing any, anything that would allow us to distinguish this.
So from my perspective, I understand there's a lot of emotion behind this, there's a lot of people who aren't very invested, but I can't see how we can hear something. We're making a court decision, we're making an important decision, and if we go outside of our purview of our, you know, our rules and regs and make decisions outside of things that we've said, like our Title Section 2 of Section 7 says, we, it has to be made within 30 days. If we start operating outside of that, then we start running the risk of making bad decisions and decisions that aren't going to hold up. So it's, and it might not be fair, and it might, there might be problems in the process, and there might be things to evaluate later on down the line, but as, as they're in front of me right now, it's hard to, hard to see.
It's a self-fulfilling prophecy if you don't notice anybody and then you stick to your rules.
I guess if you see something wrong with the rules, now they've come to light, we need to work on that and see if we can change.
Like, we have processes to change. Like, we have processes to change the rules.
Yeah.
And now that we are aware of them and how they might affect things, we then go through the processes, but as far as they stand now, our power comes from following the guidelines.
Do I have a motion?
Do you want to make a motion, or do you want? I guess I would make a motion to, to find that we do not have jurisdiction to hear this administrative appeal, because it was filed beyond the 30 days, the 30-day requirement of our rules.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
So, the determination of the board is, we don't have jurisdiction to hear the administrative appeal due to the fact that it was applied in over 30 days.
That's, that's it. We do still need to do meeting minutes, so the meeting is not over.
Yeah, our meeting's not done, so you are free to leave, but we will be going through minutes from our last meeting.
Thanks, bud. Have a good night. Yeah.
I don't think the people came to see you review your minutes.
You don't think so?
I don't think so.
That's hurtful.
It's a shame.
Not somebody on YouTube right now.
Joanna's going to be watching. Somebody watches this on YouTube.
My wife might be. Whenever she comes here, does something for some other board, I watch her on YouTube.
Yeah.
Occasionally, I see like six other viewers watching.
Okay, so we're gonna, we need to review the June 18th minutes. Did anybody find anything?
So, I, yeah, I wasn't present, so...
That's not helpful.
No.
I'm not going to lie, I didn't go through them too closely due to the fact that I was reading other things.
We had a large packet to read this week, definitely. In my perusal, I did not notice anything glaring at me, but again, I was not reviewing it against the video or anything.
Yeah, and same. I mean, I looked at them, I did not see anything. Does any, I was...
I don't have a reason not to approve them.
You know, in Joanna, I don't...
In my reviewing of them, I did not find a reason not to approve the minutes.
The fact that nobody took a fine tooth comb to them, is anybody uncomfortable approving them?
Nope.
Nope.
No, I did read them, I just didn't...
Compared to a video?
Compared them against what actually happened when I was there, like, to the videotape.
So, can I get a motion?
I motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 18th, 2024.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, since I wasn't there.
You're left. And I think that is the end of our agenda. Am I correct?
That was the only minutes, right? We're not backed up on any, are we?
Yep, that's pretty cool. Okay.
That is it.
So, is there going to be another motion for me?
Motion to adjourn?
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.